Good evening. I'd like to call the council meeting for Monday, November 18th, 2024 to order. Number two on our list is the appointment of the Mayor Pro Tem. Do we have a motion?
No move.
Motion by Alderman Cobb's and a second by Alderman Navarez. And who would you like to appoint?
I move that we appoint Alderwoman Swanson as the Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. Can you second?
And I'll second that.
All right, great. Jones?
Aye.
Noble? Cobb's?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
Osingah?
Aye.
O'Brien?
You both stepped out.
Malone Marshall? Rude?
Aye.
One, two, three, four, five. Nine ayes. And one, two, three, four absent. Okay, here we go.
Here.
Aye, say aye, aye, aye.
Right now there's- Alderman O'Brien, would you like to vote for Alderwoman Swanson to be the Mayor Pro Tem?
I would, aye.
Aye, okay. Baron? Okay, so we've got 11 ayes, zero nays.
Okay, motion carries. We're gonna go to item three, which is our prayer for the night. And Reverend Dave Robinson, I did not see him, so Alderman Prude is gonna lead us in
Gracious Father, we thank you once again for allowing us to be here. We pray right now in the absence of our mayor that our Mayor Pro Tem will continue the business of the city council. We pray right now for our city council. And then we pray that all minds are clear, all heads coming together as we continue to uplift our city, Lord. These are many blessings we ask in your son Jesus' name. Amen.
Item four. We have the Kankakee Elite Cheerleaders to lead us in the pledge.
You guys wanna come up here?
You know what to do, Mr. Jones.
Come on all the way up.
All the way up here.
There you go, good job.
Yes, indeed. Face the wall under the flag.
Our flag is right here.
Face the flag.
Y'all can do too well.
Right. Built perfect.
They can go up, go up.
I am allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
He'll be back. He'll be back. There you go, there you go.
One, two, three.
Smile.
One, two.
Boy, what more?
That's what they trick smile like. Take the relief. Come on. We need to note for the record that Alderwoman Lenora Noble is present. And now we're gonna go to item five. It's public comments. Please give your name and direct your comments to the Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem. Comments are limited to three minutes. All comments will be made individually. The person signed up is Cynthia Brackens, if you'd like to come up.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Cynthia Brackens, C.Y.A.N.T.H.I.A., Brackens, B.R.A.C.K.I.N.S. Dear City of Kankakee, on behalf of the Kankakee Elite Cheerleaders, we are excited to invite you or your organization to partner with us by sponsoring our youth league. As a nonprofit, all volunteer organization, we are dedicated to providing affordable and free athletic opportunities for our children, ages five to 14, in Kankakee County. Our mission is to promote physical activity among youth while furthering our overall development. We are thrilled to announce that three of our cheer squads have qualified for the national competition, with two squads already confirming their participation. To ensure that this incredible opportunity is accessible to our youth athletes, we are reaching out for our community to support and to help cover the associated causes. The national competition is scheduled to take place in Tampa, Florida, from December 11th to December 15th, 2024. With your support, we hope to allow each cheerleader to participate in this remarkable event. Each cheerleader is required to pay $600 to cover their expenses. Any contributions made by the City of Kankakee will greatly be appreciated. All of our cheerleaders are students from the Kankakee School District 111, and their families are members of our productive community. We sincerely thank you in advance for your support. Your contributions will help cover causes related to housing, transportation, meals, and other expenses occur during this time of competition. We are looking forward to welcoming our organization as a valued partner and working together to achieve remarkable milestones. Our teams had achieved honorable success in our organizational season, including the following accomplishments. Eight U place first in our state cheer competition. Ten U state cheer competition. Our 12 U first-place state champions. Our 13 U third-place state cheer champions. Our 10 U regional champions. Our 10 U place first in the national championship. And our 14 U took state champion. And we wanna thank you for all of your consideration, Kankakee Three Elite Cheerleaders.
Next item on the agenda is roll call, A City Council.
Jones?
Present.
Noble?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Navarez?
Here.
Marzak?
Present.
Swanson?
Here.
Tally?
Here.
Osingah?
Present.
O'Brien?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Malone Marshall? Rude?
Here.
Twelve present, two absent.
Item B, Department Hacks.
Kidwell?
Here.
LaRoche? Rogers?
Here.
Hubel? Present. Landwehr?
Present.
Taylor?
Here.
Newton? He's here?
Here.
Pigash?
Present.
Nelson? Beasley?
Here.
King?
Here.
Crosswell? Rura Watson? Here, thank you.
Okay, next item would be the minutes for Monday, November 4th, 2024. Is there a motion to approve?
So move Mayor Pro Tem.
Motion made by Alderman Osingah, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Alderman Tally. Are there any questions, changes, any remarks on the minutes? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Noble?
Aye.
Cobb's?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
Osingah?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Rude?
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. The minutes are approved for Monday, November 4th. The next item is petition, and we have none tonight, so the next item would be nine communications, number A.
A presentation by the Kankakee Police Department recognizing Josh Schneider on
So tonight I'd like to recognize and congratulate Josh Schneider. Josh is a 19-year veteran at the Kankakee Police Department. He was recently promoted to the rank of sergeant. He spent the majority of his time in the patrol division. He did spend a four-year stint with the Kankakee Metropolitan Enforcement Group as a special agent. He's also a field training officer. He's done a wonderful job doing that. We've hired 30-some officers in the past three or four years, and Josh has been one of the key instructors and all that. So I think this is gonna be a natural transition for him. He's a lifelong resident of Kankakee County. He graduated from Kankakee Community College with an associate's degree. I think he's gonna be a wonderful addition to the midnight shift. He's gonna go there and work as a sergeant. That's the only caveat he's got. He's given up his day job to go to midnights and supervise, so congratulations, Josh.
Congratulations.
No, he knows how to do it.
I like this tradition.
Yeah.
Yes. Personal. Congratulations, Eric.
Okay, next item on the agenda is nine B.
A presentation of an EMS award by Riverside Medical Center to the Kankakee Fire Department regarding an incident on September 1st, 2024.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me take a few minutes to recognize some of our personnel. We have about seven, eight personnel like to present an EMS excellence award to, but we also have Riverside ER staff here that are gonna be giving them an award also. I live by Kevin Hack. Would you like to come up, please? Our personnel, we're all members of B Shift. If I name, they'll come on up. Firefighter Matt Harnish, firefighter Kevin Smith, firefighter Seth Zedek, firefighter Jason Howe, firefighter Sean Russell, firefighter Kyle St. Peter, firefighter Chris Foster, and Captain Chris Salazar. I'm gonna let the narrative be told by our Riverside staff here.
Hi, thank you very much for having us today. My name's Dana Arson. I'm the trauma coordinator at Riverside. A couple years ago, we put together this award system. It's called EMS Call of the Quarter. And the way that it works is that all EMS providers who bring a patient to Riverside, the nurses, the techs, and the doctors all look at them and they say, hey, they did an outstanding job, so they nominate them for the EMS Call of the Quarter. Then I take all of the nominations, I blind them completely, and we sit down as a multidisciplinary unit, essentially, and we all basically talk through and figure out what we think is the best call for that quarter. So I'll let Tammy tell you the call that we picked.
My name is Tammy Walters, a nurse in the ER. Know each one of these guys pretty good. We're pretty proud of you guys, so congratulations for tonight. On September 1st, 2024, approximately 11 o'clock at night, Engine 4, Ambulance 2, and Car 6 were dispatched for an infant not breathing with CPR in progress. While en route, CanCom provided an update that this was actually a live birth that had just occurred, and the infant was possibly stillborn. Car 6 requested a second ambulance to be dispatched to the scene for the mother. Ambulance 1 was then dispatched to the location. Ambulance 2 and Engine 4 arrived on the scene to find that the mother had given birth in the bathroom of the home. The mother stated the infant was 36 weeks and the delivery was unexpected. Upon performing a quick assessment of the infant, it was determined that the child was not breathing and was cyanotic. Members of Ambulance, sorry, members of Ambulance 2 and Engine 4 immediately began performing chest compressions on the child. After a few moments, the infant started to breathe and began crying. Best sound ever, right? Members then continued to provide care for both the mother and the child, including clamping and cutting the umbilical cord. Once the infant was stabilized in the bathroom, they wrapped the infant in a blanket and prepared for transport. Members of Engine 4 continued care on the mother until the arrival of Ambulance 1. Sorry, let me skip over that part. Ambulance 1 arrived on scene and assumed patient care of the mother. Firefighter Russell, who was the assigned driver of Engine 4, was assigned to drive Ambulance 2 with their crew to Riverside ER. Ambulance 2 continued with patient stabilization and care while transporting to Riverside. Ambulance 1 performed ALS care on the mother and was also transported to Riverside without incident. Both patients were directly brought to labor and delivery, which is not uncommon, because the ER doesn't want any part of that. Go on to the professionals, right? They were doing very well at the time that the ambulances went back into service. So congratulations, we're very proud of you. We have pins that we wanna give every member that was involved on the call and some certificates, and then specifically a nice plaque that we can hand, have you guys hang in your department. So we'll call off your name, and you can come up and grab your pin and your certificate. And can I just say, too, that this baby is alive and thriving today because of what these gentlemen did, so kudos.
Kyle St. Peter.
Do we want a couple pictures?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you guys very much.
We love good stories like that. We have an amazing fire department and police department. Next item is item 10, standing committees, number A.
Public safety for Wednesday, November 6th, 2024.
Alderman Osingah?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. We had our meeting on November the 6th. It was a Wednesday, normally do on Tuesday, but it was election day, so we moved it off a day. Meeting was called to order at 5:30, and we reviewed the minutes of the September meeting and we approved those minutes. There were no public comments. We looked at the bills for September, because in October, we did not have a quorum to approve the bills. So under old business, we approved the bills for the Fire Department totaling $108,943.62. And for the Police Department, we approved the bills totaling $218,637.58. In our regular meeting, Chief Kidwell was present for the Police Department. We're currently staffed with 65 officers, we're budgeted for 67. We do have a new hiring list now. We have 16 candidates on there, and there'll be three candidates going to the academy in January, possibly a couple more, because we had one officer retire a couple weeks ago and another one's retiring in December. Officers continue to recover weapons. They recovered 14 weapons off the street in October, bringing the total to 116 weapons taken off the street this year in the City of Kankakee. We revealed the bills for October, $152,484.57. Those were approved by unanimous roll call vote of committee members. Officers, in the month of October, patrol officers handled 4,876 calls for service, at 109 adult arrests and two juvenile arrests. They wrote 587 citations and handled 87 traffic accidents. There was one homicide in the month, but a suspect has already been taken into custody for that homicide. And officers responded to 217 domestic-related calls in October. On the Fire Department, Chief LaRoche and Jeppity Hyde were present. The Fire Department's currently staffed with 49 firefighters and we're budgeted for 51. There are four personnel attending paramedic classes, one which is an intern. The bills for the month of October for the Fire Department totaled $65,385.72. One of the bigger bills was CanCom, $32,584.50. And they had $2,800 for station repairs, $13,616 for apparatus maintenance, and fuel costs totaled almost $4,800. After a motion and a second, the bills were approved. Over time for the month totaled 412 hours, at a cost of $20,045, and 41 of those hours for special events. The tower ladder has been returned to us. It's under costly repairs. The total cost to repair that piece of equipment is in excess of $95,000. We do have a new one on order, and we won't get that for another year or so. Vehicle maintenance totaled $13,616. The Fire Department was very busy. They responded to 677 calls for the month. 419 were medical calls. Service remains consistent, and if it stays the way it is, this will be the busiest year in the history of the Fire Department. The Fire Department also responded to 16 calls outside the City of Kankakee. They had one fire in the month of October costing about $5,000, and adds 22 fires for the year totaling $472,900. Chief LaRoche discussed the fire prevention and educational programs put on by fire personnel. There was no need for an executive session, and we rejoined at 6:15 PM.
Thank you. Next item is 10 B.
An ordinance committee for Tuesday, July 23rd, 2024.
Alderman Marzak?
Thank you. The regular meeting of the ordinance committee was called to order at the Donald Lee Green Public Safety Center by Chairman Lance Marzak on Tuesday, July 23rd, 2024, at 5:30. At that time, we only had three committee members present, Dave Baron, Lenora Noble, and Lance Marzak. Also present were Mayor Curtis, as well as three representatives for NextAmp Solar, and two representatives from Johnny's Pizza. We did not have a quorum at that time, but Alderman Dale Tally was on the way, so Chairman Marzak and Alderman Baron presented some information on parking downtown and why we are looking to create some temporary restricted parking areas downtown, only when events are going on. Alderman Dale Tally arrives, so we now had a quorum. We had no public comment. Chairman asked the representatives from Johnny's Pizza to address the committee. They presented concerns that they had with customers not being able to find a close parking spot for picking up orders due to all the parking being taken for events downtown. Alderwoman Noble stated, when she comes to the farmer's market, she can't see any parking spots available. The ideas that were talked about would be establishing a few 15-minute parking spots. They'd be temporarily restricted parking areas. Alderman Baron made a motion to have in-house counsel draw up a temporary restricted parking ordinance, and it was seconded by Tally. The motion passed. Next was, NextAmp was on the agenda. This was up for discussion again, the same as last month, as they were having a hard time moving forward with the project due to the conditions placed upon them. After the representatives from NextAmp presented the position on financing and with the condition that is placed, knowing that it would be hard for them to move forward with the project, the committee recommended it go to full city council for a vote after making a few changes in the wording. Baron suggested remove "as a whole" from the third paragraph, first sentence, switch to an "or" and an "a," an "and," and have a clear definition of what affiliate is. This is subject to legal approval. Motion was made by Baron, seconded by Noble. Motion passed. Chairman Marzak asked for a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting. Motion passed. Next was to accept a recommendation for a definition for Mike Hoffman of a homeless shelter daycare facility. He recommended to treat it the same as the definition for a shelter care facility. A boardroom or women's home for the sheltered care of persons with special needs, excluding such homes defined herein as a community residence and/or halfway house, which in addition to providing food and shelter, may also provide some combination of personal care, social, or counseling service, and transportation, including but not limited to homeless and/or domestic violence shelters. Motion was made by Baron, seconded by Tally. Motion passed. Next was drinking on public property. Chairman Marzak states he observed gatherings at the local liquor store, and one person was laying in the street with medical on site. Also, it was observed, there was a group in the fourth ward with beer cans on the street. Baron states not much of a change from last month, and it will be left on for updates. Next was the number of tickets and violations needed prior to towing a vehicle. Baron had a conversation with in-house counsel Dawn Landwehr and Chief Kidwell about this topic. He presented a situation in his ward that brought this to light, and a need for looking at the number of tickets. After the discussion with the committee, they moved to recommend lowering the number of tickets from the current six tickets to three tickets in 21 days. Motion was made by Baron, seconded by Tally, to direct in-house counsel to make modifications and present this to full city council. Motion passed. Under new business was the Office of City Planner ordinance. The mayor gave some history of how the City Planner's office has been part of code- The mayor gave some history of how the city planner's office has been part of code, and now it would be separate. He just wanted to bring this to the committee for any question or concerns. The committee had none, uh, there was no need for executive session, there was no Alderman question and concerns, and motion made to adjourn by Tully, seconded by Noble, adjournment was at 6:50, respectfully submitted, Lance Marzak.
Thank you, Alderman Marzak. Um, next item, um, would be 11A, report of officers.
City of Kankakee bills in the amount of $413,807.37.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the report of officers, let's pay the bills in the amount of $413,807.37.
We have a motion from Alderman Navarez, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Jones, are there any questions on the bills? Seeing no questions, roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Singa.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
I, but I abstain as to check 83232 to Kankakee Ace Hardware, checks 83245, and check 1442 to Pigish Engineering, and check 83194 to Barbara Brewer Watson to avoid a potential conflict of interest.
Thank you. Prude.
Aye.
12 ayes, zero nays.
The bills are paid for the city of Kankakee in the amount of $413,807.37. Item 11B.
Environmental Services Utility Bills in the amount of $741,521.87.
I'll make that motion to approve the bills in the amount of $741,521.87.
I'll second that.
Second by Alderman O'Singa. Roll call, I'm sorry, any questions? On the ASQ bills, hearing none, roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Singa.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
I, but I abstain as to check 35707 to Kankakee Ace Hardware, check 35710 to Kankakee Truck Equipment, check 35721 to Pigish Semino Incorporated, each to avoid a potential conflict.
Thank you. Prude.
Aye.
12 ayes, zero nays.
Um, motion carried, the bills are paid for environmental services utilities. The next item on the agenda is 12 unfinished business, we have nothing for tonight. So the next item on new business would be 13A.
An ordinance amending Chapter 32, Section 231 entitled Handicap Parking of the Municipal Code of the City of Kankakee, rescinding ordinance number 2015-70, establishing a handicap parking at 506 North Adams Street.
I would ask for a motion to suspend the rules that would allow for the passage of this ordinance.
I'll make that motion.
Alderman Navarez made the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Lewis, roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Singa.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
12 ayes, zero nays.
Motion carried. Um, next, could we have a motion for, to place the ordinance on final reading for passage?
So move.
We have a motion from Alderman Navarez, a second.
Second.
Second from Alderwoman Lewis. Are there any comments, questions, discussions? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Singa.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
12 ayes, zero nays.
Motion carried. There's no B, C and D, so we'll just change it. Next item on the agenda is 14C. Or, I'm sorry, 13C.
An ordinance amending Chapter, ordinance 2022-56, authorizing and promulgating a policy for the sale of certain property owned, owned vacant residential parcels and approving a form agreement and deed for the conveyance thereof.
I'd ask for a motion to suspend the rules that would allow for the passage of this ordinance.
So move.
I have a motion from Alderman Cobb, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Tully. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Singa.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
12 ayes, zero nays.
Motion carried. Now I need a motion to place the ordinance on final reading for passage.
So move.
I have a motion from Alderman Cobb, a second.
I'll second.
Second from Alderman Tully, is there, are there any discussions, comments, or questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Singa.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
12 ayes, zero nays.
Motion carried. Um, now we need a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage. Did I already do that?
Yes.
Never mind, I already did that. Write that. Um, next item is 13D.
An ordinance amending ordinance 2022-57, authorizing and promulgating a policy for the sale of certain city-owned improved parcels.
I need a motion to suspend the rules that would allow for the passage of this ordinance.
So move.
I have a motion from Alderman Cobb, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Alderwoman Noble, roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Singa.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
12 ayes, zero nays.
Motion carried. Now we need a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage.
So move.
I have a motion from Alderman Cobb, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Alderwoman Noble, are there any discussions, comments, or questions? Alderman Marzak.
I'd just like to say that this is a, you know, this is a great direction because what, what's happening here is we're taking, you know, and all these city lots that DPW has to mow and maintain, and all these vacant buildings, and, you know, hopefully getting them back on the tax rolls, um, either, either torn, torn down and the neighbors are adjoining to these properties are going to be taking care of themselves. There's nothing but an upside to doing this.
Are there any other questions, comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Singa.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
12 ayes, zero nays.
Motion carried. Item 13E, appointments, we have none tonight. So we'll move on to 14, motion and resolutions, item A.
Resolution authorizing the renewal of the city of Kankakee's property and casualty and law enforcement liability policy for the 12-1 2024 through the 12-1 2025 policy year, issued by Illinois County's Risk Management Trust for the amount of $890,931.
Um, I would ask, um, Elizabeth Kupal to give us some insight on this.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, we just want to give you a little bit of background information as to the renewal of these policies. You will find that on both of them, but I'll speak specifically about general liability, um, property casualty and law enforcement liability, the one we're looking at right now. Um, it is again this year going to be with IC RMT, that's the company we have been with the last few years. Um, the situation financially with this one is that it will be $57,666 more, but this actually includes the cyber insurance policy that last year we did separately. So that is included within this amount. Plus, the big piece of this is that we were able to look at two different proposals. And one of the proposals that did have a cost savings had much larger, um, deductibles all the way through. So like one deductible that was zero to us now, if we had an auto claim, was going to go up to $5,000. And law enforcement that was $10,000 was, per incident, was going to go up to $25,000. So that small savings that we would have had, we would have eaten up through deductibles in really no time because obviously with 24/7 departments, things happen, right? We have things that occur, they just do because we work more hours than lots of folks do. So we were very pleased then to be able to have this and only have that $57,000 roughly dollar increase because it's still under 7%, it's at 6.9%. And remember, it includes the cybersecurity, so really and truly, it's only about probably a 3% or so, a 3% to 4% increase. So we were very, very pleased, and we're very pleased to stay with the same carrier, we have had very good luck. I know the clerk's office does very well with the correspondence with the company, and, um, we are very pleased with this renewal.
Okay, um, is there a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the renewal of the property and casualty insurance?
So move.
I have a motion from Alderman O'Brien, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman O'Singa, are there any questions? Comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Singa.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
12 ayes, zero nays.
Motion carried. Item 14B.
Resolution authorizing the renewal of the city of Kankakee's workers' compensation policy for the 12-1 2024 through the 12-1 2025 policy year, issued by Illinois County's Risk Management Trust for the amount of $1,195,040.
Um, City Administrator Kupal, do you have any comments on that?
Yes, thank you again. Uh, so now we're talking about workers' compensation insurance, and we are extremely pleased to bring this one to you. Uh, due to the work of a lot of, I think, really good programming that we're doing within the departments and better training that we have been working on, we had an excellent year with very low utilization with workers' compensation. So this year, uh, the policy, it is once again identical, it's the same identical company, everything is the same, except that the premium went down, $80,317. So although we did see that increase in liability, we're matching it against an $80,000 savings, therefore, we still come out ahead as savings of $22,651 between the two. Uh, so we are extremely pleased with this. Uh, anytime, as all of you know, with insurance, if you have a year of low utilization, it is just a winner when it comes to renewal time, so we are extremely pleased to bring this to you this evening.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion to approve the authors, for the resolution authorizing the renewal of the city of Kankakee workers' compensation policy. Is there a motion?
So move.
I have a, a motion by Alderman Prude and a second by Alderwoman Lewis.
Yes.
Are there any questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Singa.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
12 ayes, zero nays.
Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is 14C.
Resolution authorizing the acceptance and execution of the 2025 Master Services Agreement Task Order for the Kankakee Hydroelectric Facility Dam Relicensing Project between StanTech Consulting Services, Inc. and the city of Kankakee for the amount of $106,500.
Superintendent Newton.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, so yeah, if you remember, we are in the, uh, year three, excuse me, of a multi-year process to re-license the hydroelectric plant. Uh, so this takes us into the next phase, which essentially gets us through, uh, the pre-draft license application and the draft license application puts us in a good position, uh, to, um, the, work on the final license application that we have to get into FERC by the end of April 2026.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the StanTech agreement for the hydroplant?
So move.
Um, motion from Alderman Jones, second from Alderman Marzak. Are there any questions, comments, concerns? Roll call, please.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Singa.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
12 ayes, zero nays.
Motion carries. Next item is 14D.
Resolution authorizing the city of Kankakee Economic and Community Development Agency to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the American Lung Association.
Director Brewer Watson.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, this is a memorandum of understanding between the American Lung Association and the ECDA Department to continue outreach activities that we have already been doing. Uh, they saw the value and really appreciative of Samantha Warknowski's work and the outreach, um, coordination of our department's work. And so kudos to her and the team for great work in the Neighborhood Walks Initiative. We are coming close to hitting 6,000 homes that we have hit this year. And, uh, the American Lung Association saw that we were doing some of the work that they couldn't get to, and so they would like to give us $7,000 to contribute to the expenses of the outreach work that we are doing. And so this is that memorandum of understanding of, we're going to continue to do that work, the services that are listed there, we are already doing, and we are already reporting back to them. The format for that report will change. Uh, this is not going to incur any additional hours of work for our team or Samantha, but will certainly help us cut down on the costs that we, uh, incur for printing and bags and, uh, a little bit of labor there. So, uh, that is it. We did bring this to the Community Development Committee on November 4th for discussion. It was voted and approved to move it to city council tonight for approval. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. So I'm looking for a motion to pass the resolution authorizing the city of Kankakee Economic and Community Development Agency to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the American Lung Association. So moved. I have a motion from Alderwoman Alderwoman Lewis, is there a second? Second from Alderman Navarez. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marsak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Ocinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Motion carried. Next item is item 14E.
Resolution authorizing the renewal of the ShotSpotter Response Subscription Service, which shall be delivered in accordance with the ShotSpotter Flex Services Agreement for the period of November 9th, 2024 through November 8th, 2025 for the amount of $49,500.
Chica Well, do you have anything to add?
Not really. It's just a renewal of what we've had. They signed the original contract in 2020 and we've continued it into 2024. And I believe in the last hour of funds, we allocated three years for it, so this will be 2024's allocation and then we'll have two more years after this.
Okay, thank you. So I'm looking for a motion to pass the resolution authorizing the renewal of the ShotSpotter subscription. I have a motion from Alderman Ocinga, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Prude. Are there any questions, comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marsak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Ocinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is 14F.
Resolution of the city of Kankakee authorizing the sale of vacant parcels pursuant to ordinance 2022-56, which approved the city-owned vacant parcel sales policy.
Okay, our in-house counsel, Ms. Landware, do you have something to talk to us about?
Sure, I'll just explain this briefly. So the ordinance 2256 required vacant parcels that the city was willing to sell at a nominal amount to the adjacent landowners to go to an administrative review team. So first of all, everyone had to fill out an application. That went to the administrative review team. Those applications were reviewed and the recommendation was then made to send this on to the Community Development Committee, which then made the recommendation to send this on to the city council for authorization. So with the vacant lot parcels, we are at seven lots that we are going to deed over to the adjacent landowners so that they can take care of this land instead of the city